We're going to call to order, we have met in closed session, we have a forum. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I believe we start with one of our favorite things, a student presentation from North High.
And I'm going to have Mr. Mirandola, who's our new student activities director, introduce our group.
But I'm on the spot right away.
Thank you, and good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce some members from FCC LA. And so I'm going to ask Claire Jade and Alexa to come up. I've asked them to share a little bit about their involvement with FCC LA. It's an excellent club that's provided a lot of opportunities for our students. Particularly this upcoming week, they're running an all-school and community blood drive at North High School. And so the students are very much involved in planning that. Also, in the last few years, this club has kind of taken on new life, and we've had a lot of success both at the regional and state level with our students. So I'm going to ask them to share a little bit more information about that. But I also want to introduce the club sponsors, Ms. Tajak and Ms. Cordeki as well, and just recognize their efforts and the phenomenal work that they're doing. So I'm going to turn it over to, is it Claire first?
Uh, Alexa.
To Alexa. So Alexa's going to get us started then, talking about FCC LA.
Hi, I'm Alexa Johnson, and FCC LA is about being inspired, leading others, developing new skills, exploring career opportunities, building strong friendships, and giving back to our community. We specialize in fashion, teaching, culinary, and many more career options. Our club hosts events for the community such as our annual blood drive, and we also come together with other clubs at North. For example, we joined up with the Spanish Club last year to make Spanish hot chocolate.
Hi, I'm Jade Gandhi. FCC LA is also involved in career-oriented opportunities. I found out about FCC LA through fashion merchandising class. Ms. Cordeki, who is the sponsor of FCC LA, convinced my partner and I to compete in a fashion apparel display after completing a project that included elements of fashion. She thought we did really well and wanted us to compete in that category. Thanks to her, the following year, I received a Most Outstanding Award at regionals and first in state. Many people, including Claire and Alexa and I, have been very successful in that category. However, FCC LA does not only offer to compete in fashion, but also in early childhood development care and culinary competitions as well. A former student, Abby Testin, who graduated last year, earned numerous Most Outstanding Awards as well as first-place awards in Fondant Cakes. Because of her accomplishments, she earned scholarships to many culinary schools and the opportunity to go culinary, to go to a culinary summer camp at Kendall College that summer. Downers Grove North has been proven to be extremely successful, successful in all categories in FCC LA. Because of Ms. Cordeki and joining this club, I was able to discover a hidden talent and have the opportunity to turn it into something more.
I'm Claire Raleigh, and I just wanted to talk a little bit more about our blood drive that's coming up this week, on the 5th, which is the Thursday, at Downers Grove North. And so this is through Life Source, which is actually the blood provider to all advocate hospitals throughout the Chicagoland area. And we host blood drives at the Advocate Good Samaritan Hospital in Downers Grove about six times per year. So for our blood drive at Downers Grove North, not only students from the school, but people out from, outside the school can also come and donate blood. And we had over 100 donors last year, which is really awesome, because each single donor can save up to three lives. So you can imagine how many lives we touched and what a great impact this was on our community. And in addition to that, the high schools are about 35% of the donor base for Life Source. So it's really great to help keep the community hospitals fully stocked. And as a bonus for us in the FCC LA club, some of the proceeds from the blood drive are put toward a scholarship for us that we can use in college. And this year, we've actually opened the scholarship to anybody donating. So anyone who can donate can put their name into a raffle, which can then be selected to win one of the scholarships. So that's really great that we can do this this year. So does anyone have any questions?
How, so when is your next blood drive?
Our next blood drive is this Thursday, which is the 5th.
And what time?
It's during the school hours, so you can come anytime then. And I would encourage you all to come also.
I'd just like to commend you. I think this is a great, yeah, I'm a nurse, and there's no greater gift many people can give to the health of others than to donate blood. So thank you very much, and congratulations on doing so well.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, introduction of student board members.
All right, so in a moment, I'm going to ask each of the principals to come up and introduce our new student board members. As the board knows, this is a project we've been working on for about a year now, to try to get some student voice at each board meeting. So over the last year, it kind of mirrored a process that was half board preparation for like a board election, half job interview, I would say, that they went through, because there was a petition portion, and that aspect of it, similar to what a board member would go through to get on a ballot. But then there was a portion that was more job interview with references and sitting down with the principals and going through an interview process. And at the end, I believe two very qualified candidates have emerged that are going to be joining the board tonight. So the principals are going to come forward and I think just introduce them, and then we've asked the students to say a little bit about themselves and what they do at school. And then they each have a seat at the table.
Okay, good evening. So I have the distinct pleasure to introduce Prevail Banga. Prevail goes by PJ at school, so I'll let her tell you a little bit about herself.
So as Ms. Schwartz said, I'm Prevail Banga. I go to North, and I'm involved in UMS and UWS, which is a group that me and a graduated senior actually just started. I'm involved in track and field, Student Advisory Council with Ms. Schwartz, Senior Class Board, and now I'm on the Board of Education. And I'm just extremely excited and happy to be here. Just in my interview, I was talking to Ms. Schwartz and Mr. Mirandola about how excited and how badly I wanted this position, just because I feel like I can do such a good job of giving students at my school voice and representing my school, because I have a lot of connections to people, especially through doing basketball, volleyball, and doing track, being involved in different groups, being close with teachers and departments. I'm just really excited to have this opportunity to be able to make a difference for my school.
We are so glad to have you, PJ.
Thank you.
Welcome. Come on up, PJ. Take your seat. And we at South High are equally excited to introduce you to Simone Black, who will represent the South High student body.
Hi, I'm Simone. I'm a senior. I'm involved in Snowflake and Snowball. I'm an English tutor. I participate in choir. I'm also in drama club and plays. Yeah, and I also did Mad Dash Two. And then I also work part-time at McDonald's, and I volunteer at my church. So I'm a pretty busy person. And I was just really excited when I heard about this position, because I've really been waiting for it. Like, students should have a voice, I think, and I'm really excited to see what will come out of this experience. So thank you.
I've got to say something in full disclosure. Simone is like a daughter to me. I've known her since her fir-, no, seriously, since her first day of kindergarten. But I did not know she applied. Mr. Schwartz and I were not in cahoots of, oh my god. I didn't know you applied until your mom let me know that you got the position. So I just want to keep that honest here.
Well, welcome both.
Great, okay. We're going to move right on to exciting news, the project status for life safety projects and capital projects.
All right, let's see if I can work the, work a computer here. All right, so pulling up the presentation here, everybody knows this was a short summer on the calendar, but it was not in the amount of work that was accomplished over the course of the school year, or of the summer itself. Earlier in prior board meetings from July up until now, we've covered a lot of activity that did occur in the summer months, which you can see up there, leading up to the start of the school year, and the presentation of the board goals to our staff. And we're well underway on a lot of different things. I won't read to you the list, but you can see, we've already presented to the board on many of the activities that did take place in those summer months. What we wanted to do was focus in on a couple of things that haven't yet come before the board for updates. So life safety projects and capital projects, there was a website upgrade over the summer. Got it? We have been working, Pete's been working on video interviews as first-round screenings for new employee candidates, anonymous alerts, which we'll get into, which is a way for people to get in touch with staff and let us know that things are going on, and then a new residency check process that we did using data. So we'll go through each one of these. Jim's in the hot seat first, but we'll have some people probably come up and speak as we move through these different projects, so you'll hear from quite a few of us in the process. So we're going to kick it off with life safety and capital improvement projects led by Jim here.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Healy. General comments, I'm going to start with that. I do have two people here tonight, our supervisors that are billings, Mike Reyes and Michelle Cannon. They're going to come up and share some photos with you and briefly go through some of the projects that happened at their specific schools. As Hank mentioned, we had a shortened summer, so we were very aggressive. We started some of these projects, if you remember, back in spring, specifically the big ones, which were the two large life safety projects, the transformer replacement and switchgear at South, and the auditorium air handlers and library air handlers at North. So we got a head start before summer came about and got a lot of the work done, so everything went smoothly. We finished those on time. Wanted to point out that Commonwealth Edison was fantastic to work with this summer at South High. They were a great partnership and relationship with them. We had projected that we'd be down for a week to 10 days. Power at South, we were down two days. So they were exceptional. They did a great job. And our contractor was wonderful. First time I've worked with them, and they're excellent. So I want to say kudos to them as well. But you're only as good as your team, and I have two All-Stars that I've been working with this summer. And Michelle Cannon, she started her new position July 1st and hit the ground running. She's done an exceptional job, and I want to thank her for the hard work she's done this summer, and I think she's got a great future ahead of her at North High, and I appreciate everything she does. Mike, who's been in the position for a couple of years now, not only did a great job, I gave him a little extra responsibility as working with the contractors and having the responsibility of watching over them and making sure everything's done right. So he had a little more this summer, and he did a very nice job with these extra roles. So with no further ado, I'd like to first introduce Mike Reyes from South High School, and he's going to go through South High projects.
Good evening, everybody. I want to go to the first slide.
You can sit if you want, Mike.
Remember, after you have the mic.
Okay, you can stand.
Then you can stand, Mike.
So the first slide we're looking at is actually the one-meter diving boards. This is part of the life safety project. The project primarily was to replace the anchoring blocks for the main structure of the diving board itself. This project was the electrical infrastructure change. Primarily, this removed two 1964 transformers, as well as a 1964 switchgear, pulled them out of the rotation, and with this opportunity, we were able to re-feed and re-feed the main infrastructure to all the main distribution points of the facility.
And this removed that, the mechanics from inside the courtyard, correct?
Correct. So all four transformers from the courtyard have been completely uneliminated. So what you're looking at here is the final life safety project, which was the elevator modernization. On the right-hand side, we, we being the CMG crew, built a code-compliant mechanical room, and also a elevator company came in and replaced the controls for the car and also main hydraulic pump. So now that system is operating very, very well right now. Now we removed some capital items that we had. We put on our list to replace some of the shower towers. This included four shower towers and two ADA showers. This project actually saves us a lot of water. These particular towers are only activated if an individual presses the button after we activate a timer switch. So it's actually saving us a lot of, a lot of water consumption and a lot of energy as we'll go forward. So on the left-hand side, you can see partially of what this is. This is a roof. We actually ripped off the tar, old tar and gravel roof, and replaced it with an EPDM roof, and it also includes about five inches of insulation. So we got some R-value on our roofs now, and the drains are working functionally well, and everything's great up there now. No leaks. This is the large gym refinishing project. This was actually a lot of fun for us. There was a lot of design phase in working with the administration, athletic teams, coaches, basically everybody across the board. I'd like to thank Mark Malinari personally, too. He helped a big part of putting the design onto the computer to visualize it. So this project is fully complete, and new game lines, everything. So it was a fun project. So what you're looking at here is a security camera image. So we started off with 62 physical cameras in the building. We are now at 105 physical cameras, but on our feed, we get about 160 total live images. And what you're looking at right now is, you're looking at one camera that has four lenses across, that you can swing around 360 degrees. So that's what it looks like when you're looking at this particular intersection on our camera system. So this kind of started last year with the installation of some new drinking fountains across the building. This is one of the more challenging ones that we had to install in the pool. So this was a continuation of what we did from last year's purchases of these drinking fountains, and that was all done in-house right there. This is another in-house project. This is two washrooms, a men's and a women's on the third floor, which would be the D and C intersection. This project was, was kind of designed across, using some information from like Georgia Hash, Omar Davis. So what you're looking at is gapless partitions. Those are all brand-new. We have installed all-new tile floors, all-new tile walls, new modern-style sinks, and all of the flushers that you see in these pictures are solar-powered. There's no electricity powering these. We have all LED lighting in there. This was a project done by our maintenance crew, and they did, they did a great job on this project.
And this was highly requested by the staff?
And finally, that I have in photographs, we did some hallway painting. This is specifically targeting our B and C hallway on the first floor. My painters this summer were Lydia Walshrock and Grace Olch. They were great to deal with and great to work with, and they knocked out this, two hallways that were very challenging to do in this shorter summer, but they were able to achieve it, and going down the E hallway as well. I apologize. And I have one more note to make, and Mr. Schwartz and I have had this conversation before, but we'd like to thank the Park District for paving the pathway through Powers Park and working with Kevin Rozell at the Park District. We were able to get that, that path paved, so now the students have a safe path to get through. It was a little treacherous, especially in the winter times. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Cannon from North High School, and my summer got off on a big start this summer. And the day of graduation, the morning of graduation, we had the helicopter delivery of the equipment to deliver to the rooftops for the auditorium air handler replacement and the library. We replaced the two 50-year-old units with more efficient, smaller units, and they were up and running at the beginning of the school year. There's the helicopter. This next slide is the, that's the auditorium air handler, and the next slide is the library, in case you can't tell them apart. A lot of similarities there. The next slide is another life safety project for us was the replacement of the dive platform, similar to the work done at South. We had the two one-meters, the one-three-meter, all three platforms, the apparatus for the three-meter, and all three diving boards are new this year. Also, in the pool area, it was on rotation to be replastered this summer, so the pool was replastered, the lane lines were re-tiled. As you can see, it's beautiful, and it is in constant use by our swim team, dive team, PE classes, and the community swim programs right now. Now, we had a lot of work done at Legion Field this summer. Irrigation issues were addressed with the creation of a swale. Here, you can see the swale. It will direct water flow away from the homes and away from the park more efficiently. The next slide will show the accessibility was approved by the addition of a sidewalk, which is ADA compliant, and then some improvements that were needed were made with the addition of a backstop, safety netting, and new fencing. The carpet in the bandroom was slated for replacement, and we chose to go with the carpet tiles, which are economical, they are flexible in design, and the added bonus of when a carpet gets worn or damaged, just one tile can be popped into place, which can hopefully stretch the life of the carpet in the room. And similar to at South, this is the actual camera itself. This is the four-lens camera. We worked with our deans to identify new areas that needed coverage. We are up to 99 cameras at North. We purchased an additional 48 cameras, and we are still installing those, so they are still a work in progress right now. And then we at North, us also worked to replace the rest of our old drinking fountains with the new filtered bottle refilling stations. Students and staff love them. In addition to the benefits of filtered water, it saves money on the plastic bottles, so kids are bringing their metal bottles and refilling them, and they seem to be well-received. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of closing comments. All projects came in within budget, very few change orders, which is always a happy sign for me, because I get aggravated when they come in with new stuff that I don't want in there. Specific to North, those monster air handlers that were took out in the library and auditorium, that's going to give us some energy savings, folks. We're doing really good. We've had these LED lightings. We've done so much, we're at about 30% less energy usage and payment than we were a couple of years ago. So we're really doing well. Also, and lastly, the life safety work, the 10-year, we're on year three, and we are almost done with all of the projects. You have five years to complete, and we're on year three, and I think we're going to be done way before the fifth year. So I just wanted to share that with you as well. But again, thanks to these folks making me look good this summer.
We don't have a helipad, so where did the helicopter land?
It was in the south, I mean, the parking lot on the west side, so we staged it there. We had people making sure that no one was close to it. We did have some neighbors come along with their kids and watch, but they're within the parameters of where we can have them. So it was all staged there off a truck the night before, and they stayed in that parking lot all night, and then the helicopter came early morning, and it was about a half hour, we were all done. It was, it was pretty cool.
Cool. We planned it for the Teacher Institute Day when everybody was over at South, so North was wide open that day to work.
I just had a question about the security cameras. I shouldn't have this, I'm sorry. Does somebody monitor those all the time, or do we just use those for, if something happens, that we take a look back at them?
We don't have a specific person that sits in front of it all day, but many people are looking at it throughout the course of the day, and it is a go-to for the deans and for our security campus people. I personally have both of them in my office, where I can get to it very quickly, so that's how we review if something happens in the course of a day or evening or even the weekends.
How, how long are you able to store the data? I mean, it's a lot of data.
We expanded our bandwidth, so we have, and these run so much more efficiently because they're motion-sensitive, so you can have it where it's only motion, so that if there's nothing happening in that general area, it's silent, and then there's just a lull, and then it'll come back on when there's motion. The outside ones are more difficult. But we're at 30 days right now. We can go back 30 days.
Great. Ed, you had a comment?
To answer back to your question, the security desk in front, they have that on the monitors there, so they're not constantly watching, but if they don't have visitors, they can check the doors and stuff, so if the door is pumped open, they can read if something's locked.
Great, thanks, Ed. And Jim?
Anything else? Any other questions on those projects?
I'm hearing none.
All right, we're, we're not done yet. That's just, that's the first act.
Oh, the website, I'm sorry.
Now starring Jill Browning.
This will be brief.
The website refresh.
Right, so our website provider upgraded its content management system this summer, which entailed not much, as you can tell, before and after difference. It's very subtle what has changed, but what has changed is the whole backend of how we add content to everything. We used to have a rock star, Michelle Steinmetz, who was working with me and who really helped with the refresh, and she helped train people, but we're, it's an ongoing process to train on this new system. It's, it's a lot of work. But the biggest benefit of it is we're more ADA compliant with our new website. The colors, there's more of a contrast, so people like Pete Tice, who has color-blind issues, see, I don't know, maybe he's seen a difference in it, but you know, this was a good first step.
Come on, Pete.
This is a good first step of how we're bringing our websites more ADA compliant, just as we do with our facilities. You know, we want to make sure that everyone has access to our content, so this is just the beginning of that process, so just a brief update. Did anybody notice that the website's changed? Or the student members? Okay, good. All right.
All right, next up is Pete.
All right, so one of the things that we have implemented, starting with this school year, is a video interview component that we can use as an initial kind of screening tool for all candidates for the various positions in the district. So we are able to, through our current applicant tracking system, push out a link to folks who've applied to positions. We film our own questions that the candidates are asked to answer, then we get notified once the candidates have completed the interviews. We're able to click on a link, pop the interview open, watch them, you know, four or five questions. Most of them take 10 minutes-ish, but it helps cut down ultimately in the reading of hundreds of applications and resumes that come through. So this is designed to give you that first kind of glance of, okay, these are the folks that we now want to go through and do the paper screening types of work that we've done in the past, and then begin the formal interviewing process where folks come in and we actually do the live interviewing. So we're hoping that this will be a more efficient way for us to quickly identify folks we want to learn more about in our process of hiring.
And Pete has used this pretty effectively to grow the substitute teacher pool that we have at the start of the year, which is always a challenge.
So this is after, this is before they've submitted the paper?
This is kind of simultaneously, so that we post a position, an individual applies for it, and then we're able to push out the video interview link for them to then answer those questions. And then based on what we see there, sometimes you know, this is a rock star candidate, I want to go look at all the other paper that they have submitted. Sometimes you learn very quickly, this is somebody who's probably applying for every open position in the district, and this particular one is not a match for that person. open position in the district, and this particular one is not a match for that person. I'm not going to then go take the time to read through all of their paperwork to cross them out at that later point in time.
Yeah, so that was the question I had. So it's not going to everyone to apply, or is it? I guess that's kind of...
We have the capability to do it to everybody who's applied, but we've been selective.
After you've reviewed something from the candidate?
Well, so I'll give you an example, like Hank referenced the substitute teachers. So through our applicant tracking system, I was able to send an email out to the 600-and-so folks that have applied for teaching positions in the district over the last couple of years. And my email to them was, "If you currently do not have a teaching position, and you would like to be considered as a candidate for the substitute teaching pool in District 99, please respond to this email." So from that group, I had 60-some folks that said, "Yes, I'd love to be considered to be a candidate for the substitute pool in District 99." I sent those 60-some folks the video interview. Of those 60-some, initially I got about 45 who actually submitted the interviews, so then I watched all of those interviews, and based on what I saw there, I then started sending out like reference check materials on the various candidates, and from there we have been adding people to our substitute pool. I don't know if for, say, an English or a PE or social studies position, they get to 150 candidates, if we would automatically send it to everybody. We're still kind of talking about how we want to use that to our advantage, and it may differ by position.
Any other questions for Pete? All right, anonymous alerts. Scott, I'm going to have you hop in here.
Yeah, so we implemented the service with anonymous alerts on the first day of school, so on August 18th, and what it is, is it allows students and parents to relay information to us, to school officials, and then we obviously then can react to the different alerts that come to us. What I'd like to point out, though, that's really been a benefit of the program so far is that of the 40 alerts that we've had, we've been able to provide supports for students, which is really nice to have an active way of doing that through the alerts that come through. You can see the image is the little caption, which is embedded in the district site, North, South, and our transition website, and then students can access it as well through our Chromebook app, as well as through their phone, there's an app. So it's basically, they click on it, they can log in the alert that they want to inform us about, and then we react to it. So it's, like I said, we've had about 40 of them to date, which was last week, and we've had a few more since, but, so it's been great so far. Really good program for supports for kids.
Any questions on that one?
Is your sense that if, but for this system, that there might have been supports that never would have gotten to students in need?
You know what, we're starting to look at this, if we, the alerts come in sometimes, they're all anonymous, but they come in sometimes with student names and things like that, so we can, many of them have been, they've been on our radar of support and already receiving support, but it's nice to be able, we've had some that they haven't been, and we've done wellness checks and things like that with students, so it's been, I think that part is a key thing to the program.
And I, we've always had, sorry, cut you off. We've always had clear communication through email, phone, students just walking in and talking to staff. This is just another vehicle, and since it's anonymous, maybe somebody that might not have reached out via email before does it here. It's just multiple pathways to reach out to us. So these same, these same students reaching out through anonymous alerts might have just done it some other way in the past, just multiple ways to accomplish that task.
So I'd be curious from PJ and Simone, not to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot, have you heard anything about this?
I know at North, I've actually known students who like know other students that are using this, and I actually had a question. What would happen if there was an anonymous threat made, but since it's anonymous, would you be able to get to the person who like sent it in, or?
Yeah, I can answer that. So there, when you actually make a submission with it, you can enter, it's still anonymous to us as a district, but it's a third-party company, anonymous alert, and so you can enter a phone number or your email, and then what that does is that on the backside programming, if that is entered, we can then communicate with the person that submitted it, but they don't, we don't know who that person is.
Okay.
But we can text and basically, like say we want to send a message to that student, but we don't know who the student is.
Okay.
And then we can say, hey, can you give us more information? Now, if a student doesn't put their phone number or email in there, then we have no way to communicate back, so if we got something that came through that was pretty vague, we might, we wouldn't be able to do anything with it. I mean, we can try, you know, and that, but, so it is, it does help, but it also, what we've been trying to communicate to students and parents is that it's kind of difficult to say it's anonymous alerts, but then you got to put your phone number in. But we don't see that phone number, but, I mean, I can see where people would look at that and be like, wait, I got to put my number in there, it can't be anonymous. But it is, we don't see the number, we don't see the email. All we get is a message thing that allows us to communicate to the company, which then sends the communication to the student that submitted or parent to try to get more information, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
But we do, if somebody did put in an anonymous threat in some way, we do respond and investigate it and go through our processes, yeah.
And I would say the nice thing is that a lot of students or parents are putting in phone numbers and emails, so that's good. That does help, and we are then able to get more details, which is nice.
Is there a cost associated with this service?
Yeah, there is. I think, I think it was just under $3,000.
I believe so, for the full setup.
$2,500 or something like that.
For a period of time?
For a year?
Yeah, but it's less than that for the renewal. It's about $2,000 for the renewal, because there was, you know, the setup and training and all of that for the initial year.
So what kind of things can you report about? You think someone needs some emotional support?
Yeah, there's a number, yeah, there's a number, they give you at the initial setup, they give you like what other schools to use, and you can actually click on it and see the list. So you guys can all do this too, on your?
Oh, maybe. My internet connection is a little messed up.
There's a number of categories that you can, you can report, you know, fights, harassment, depression, suicide, a variety of different things, and then you pick like location, whether it was like cafeteria, hallway, you know, athletic field, classroom, you know, different things like that, or off-campus. And then it basically goes to our North or South administration that's been set up to receive them, and then they kind of channel it to whoever needs to go. And then I receive all of them via email, just I kind of look at it. And the nice thing is, is on the, like when we started it, this is why I think it's, especially for the cost, but it's such a great program, is that when we started on the 18th, we did get one the night of the 18th, and we did respond to it and help support a student, so I think it's good.
Ran away. And it works for everybody but me, obviously, so. All right. Last topic, clear residency checks. One of the things administratively we've been working more closely on through a variety of different pathways is establishing residency with students that come in, and one of the tools that we use this year, Jere was essential in helping set this up, and Julie as well, was taking information that we have in our student information system about where people live, running it through a database system called CLEAR that takes a look at people's publicly available information, and takes a look and sees if anything doesn't match up. And then we processed that through, looked at a lot of the names that were on there that were either already on our radar or not, and then we flagged those students that we thought it really looked odd, kind of the data we were getting back, so that they needed to bring in residency documentation at the time of registration. So that's kind of the process of how it worked. It's hard to say data-wise how much this one tool made a difference, because we made a change in a lot of our procedures around residency at the, this summer. This is just one of the many tools involved in that process. So just wanted to go through that as well.
Did we have a number, so what was the result? I mean, were there a number of students that were?
With residency? Yeah, there was a lot of, not, I mean, I can't say, I don't know what a lot would be for somebody, but there was work done this summer with several residency issues over, over registration. So, but whether it's this tool alone, or?
Rejected?
Yeah, that's right. You know, you're, so not just this tool, but overall, I mean, do we have quite a number of, some number of people trying to go to school in our district who are not residents?
So this is always the challenge with residency? Yes, we do have some students, and we have students that are no longer attending here because of residency, but there's also just the fact that we send a note out to the community saying we're going to check it. There's some students that I'm sure never showed up and tried to register because they knew, so it's really hard to say. We caught 12 people, because there's some that just didn't show up. There's some that are now in the correct school based on their attendance area, where they had moved, but we didn't know about it, but now we know because we tightened this up a little bit. So there's a lot of aspects, but it's hard, it's a very, residency is a very nebulous thing to try to say X number of students were impacted by this. This is just us continuing to get better at this challenging part of registration.
So there wasn't, there, we haven't seen some sort of trend that, that we responded to in doing this? This is just more of a, for a process standpoint, something we knew we could do better, so we are.
Would, if we did have a student that was shown not to be in district, would it come to the board where we would have to recollect tuition rates?
Yeah, I mean, can I jump on? Yeah, because we, yeah, I mean, we've had that too, where we're, sometimes though it gets to the point where the families withdraw from school, and it doesn't get to you guys to approve it, but you have approved some in the past, even in the last couple of years.
That's what I thought, but we haven't done a light one. So that's why I was wondering, did we, I was piggybacking on Mike's question. Have we, has this?
I mean, from my experience, what I think to help answer the question, and I think what supports it from my perspective, because I do support the residency in our district, we have, we have a number of, because, I mean, we are kind of known as a district that doesn't check residency. We usually, when the students come from our partner schools, we don't collect all the information and all that, we just kind of, you know, have the students entered into our school management system, and so we do, I think, you know, have families that know that they might be able to register with us.
Okay.
So I think this process actually starting it this last year was a great one to just inform the community that, you know, we are going to look at it, we do have some different supports that we're using. You know, because we obviously want to support the kids that are in our district, right? And the ones that aren't, I mean, there's other schools for them to go to.
Right.
And they need to do that, so I think this has been a great shift in our practice.
It's helped you, right?
Yeah, it's helped, definitely helped, and I think honestly, it was our first year, so we learned a lot from it too, so we'll be better at it next year too, you know, and truly helped the families that need to be here too.
Okay, good.
I was just going to ask, who creates the boundary lines for North and South? Like how are those created?
Sure. They've been set for a very long time, and there's a process through the Regional Office of Education, through DuPage County, for appealing to move those boundaries. But they're, they're historical, they go back quite a ways here.
And haven't changed in years.
Longer than us.
So, yeah, they're very much historical. Yeah, and you don't have to raise your hand as a student board member, you just get to ask questions.
Okay. You're all supposed to cue me, so I know you're...
Oh, okay. But I would say boundaries are a really contentious issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
The thing that did happen this summer, though, was I did receive at least phone calls from at least three different families saying, "We know we now live outside of the boundaries, and we'd like to attend and pay tuition, how much is that?" And once they found out how much it was, they either moved back within the boundaries or chose to go to their home school. But last summer, I did not receive phone calls like that, and this summer I did. So there was just a lot of indicators that this was more on people's minds this summer, and, you know, the word is getting out that we're, we're paying attention more to this than we have in the past.
That's good, I'm glad that we are, because, I mean, you're right, the students, every student has a school for them, but when, when we have students coming, you know, that are coming in our district who aren't residents, that's, there's a cost to that, and that costs at the expense of all of our other students, so.
Scott, do we have anybody on staff that would be, that would investigate then a non-residency claim, or we contract that as an outside consultant, or?
Like, yeah, no, we have, what we usually do is our, our first line is kind of communicating with the families to understand, like where are they living? So we start that in the building. Usually the administrators call me, and then I start working on it as well. We have our SROs that will go on to a residency check, so they'll go on it a couple times to actually, you know, knock on the door and talk with families, and, you know, and then they give us a report. And then that, that usually drives, like, so for example, we had a student, I believe it was actually last year, that had moved in, in February. The SRO went out, found out that, we only found out because of a mailing that went home, so that's, that's the part that's the hardest, is actually finding out. So that's why I think this clear process helps to inform our community that we are checking, because otherwise it's hard for us to know. But we found out from the SRO that, when they talked to the management company, that the lease was up in like November, and they were already out, but we didn't know that, and then we used that, and then we, you guys actually did approve to charge the tuition on that one. So I think it's a great process, and it's a good start for the district. So I think it's a good thing.
So do I understand, is the goal to do this annually?
Yes, so the, what, we paid for a one-year kind of service, so we could do it this summer, we'll be able to do it again here in the spring, because we're going to do it earlier, leading into, into the summer, so that the schools have more time to prepare. This kind of all happened towards the end of the year, so we're going to get started a little earlier in the spring, so we can give people more time to bring in their documentation, and we'll, we'll use this tool at least one more time, get a better idea of the kind of results we're seeing. As I said, this time with the summer, the schools had already identified a bunch, and there was some overlap, so it'll be interesting to do this as the first tool and see if that, if that helps the schools at all.
And then is there a next step? Would you go further?
Yeah, and we can't, we're, right now we're trying to ascertain how, how much of this turns over, how much, yeah, are we seeing a huge impact? We're not seeing a huge drop in enrollment as a result of this. Other schools, the first year that they have done things like this, have seen a precipitous drop in enrollment, so I, you know, it kind of doesn't indicate that there's a huge widespread problem, but it is, it is our legal responsibility to be on top of this. So we're just going to keep tweaking our processes, looking at the tools that are available to us, see how that works, and continue to just tighten it up a little bit each year. We also want to do it without having to increase a ton of staff to look at this, or a ton of time to look at this. There's a lot of things that happen over the summer on top of this, so it's a balance between how much we can absorb in this and being aggressive with this versus being somewhat more passive with it, but still enforce residency.
Have we, has this helped us, or do we think it'll help us identify more homeless students so that we can get them support?
I think the homeless process is pretty, that goes through Scott's office as well.
That's a great question, and I don't know exactly the answer to that, but I don't, I don't think so, but it, it may, because it could flag maybe an address that's not in our district, and when we inquire, they could be like, well, we had to move out of our home that was in the district, so it absolutely could. So, it absolutely could. I think that's when, like Hank was saying, I think when we do this in the spring, we're gonna get a better understanding of, of using the tool more proactively earlier than what we did last year. But even last year was great to do it, because you gotta start somewhere. So, I think it's a good, I think ultimately, it's gonna be a good piece of our process, and help us as a district.
How much was the investment in this jury? How much did we spend in total on this? Seems like a good...
So, if you find one, you pay for 10 years of the tool.
No, it's clearly, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you said that we, we're committed to one more year with it?
Yeah, we're gonna go this spring and see, yeah.
All right.
We'll be a little more skilled at the tool, we'll get it more, a little more proactively. This was kind of the dry run, and if we found some people because of it, great, you know, but it was just dipping the toe in the water.
All right, this is great.
All right, that's the end of project updates.
Great, and so now we can move on to ESSA, the Student Succeeds Act, and Student Achievement Data?
Yes, so this is kind of a twofer. There's two separate items, one is ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, which will feature me a little more, and then we'll turn it over to some of the student data related to this, and that will feature Gina Moore. If you'll remember, the accountability measure that we've been under for quite a while now has been No Child Left Behind, which is very much driven by test scores, and is very punitive in nature in how it approaches school accountability. ESSA is the new plan, and it's supposed to take a more humane look at school improvement rather than a punitive approach. So, this really changes a lot. In the past, we've been able to bring you test data, and that pretty much correlates to our accountability and how we are measured as a school. The whole system has changed greatly. I started introducing some of this to you last year with the Future Ready piece, which has made it into this plan in a small fashion. And if that reporting goes well, I expect that that will grow over time. So, what we want to do, there is so much data though wrapped into ESSA. We could do an eight-hour workshop and probably not get through all of it. So, as Gina and I talked through it, what we decided, probably a prudent approach for this, will be over this entire school year, we're gonna break it up into little data slices, and each month, bring you another aspect around ESSA, so that you could understand all of our data around it. And when it goes into effect next year, you have a good understanding about what our data looks like, the pieces that make it up. And then we'll probably, each year, probably give you an update as to our overall view, but then break into the data in slices. So, this will be, reporting on ESSA for as long as it's around will be just an ongoing little slice of data that we'll nibble at throughout the entire school year. So, I'll try to be shorter now for the rest of this. All right, I know, I gave you some of this, here's the timeline, you can read through that. Things that you need to know, the majority of the law goes into effect next school year, and what they're talking about is rulemaking is in progress right now. The structure of the law is written, but really the rules and how we gather data, tally data, report data, calculate it, all of that stuff is in the rulemaking process now, which is the details, and, and we know what's inside of that. So, the good part is, is we are on the front end of this, we've been very involved in this administratively, and we are all looking at ways to be on these rulemaking teams. We already have two teachers, Gina, two or three, two teachers, on their curriculum teams making the rules. Tomorrow, our administrative team has been tearing this, this law down, and we're gonna report back on what areas that we're gonna own administratively, and be keeping tabs on the rulemaking, trying to get involved, or at least reporting out on what's going on. So, we don't want this to be done to us, we want to be very involved in how this rolls out as a district. There is a whole ton of data that will be collected, you'll see how this goes. And that's gonna be a huge challenge for us administratively in, in the district office for pulling this data together. So, we've already started talking about who all we can pool resource-wise, and the support staff, and the administrative staff, and the district office to help support this. And the, the whole move you'll hear is, as I said, the, the, the rule of No Child Left Behind was find and punish. The idea of this is supposed to be identify and support. So, where this first comes in, I know this is difficult to see up on the screen, but the idea for this is that as schools work through reporting their data, we identify areas in which schools are both really doing well and are challenged. And the whole goal for Illinois State Board of Education is to connect schools that are working in an area well with schools that aren't so well, and then share ideas, resources, and try to grow schools in an area forward. There's four designations that are very difficult to understand how they work, but we'll get into those in a future meeting as to how that, and some of that's gonna be in how the rules are made as well. But there is a four-tier area, and, and we'll get a designation, but Illinois State Board of Education is not focusing on those designations as much as the specific areas in room for improvement. All right, so, the way that the math works, it's broken down into two parts. The first part is academic, that makes up 75% of your score. And you will see up here where this was in the past 100% test scores and proficiency being our measure, now you're down to a very small part of proficiency being there. The greatest part of this for us is graduation, which is, because that's the biggest part, what Gina's gonna go into next, which is graduation rates in four, five, or six-year cohorts, which Gina will explain. And then there's the tests, which are ELA, math, and science, which is coming once they finally get around to scoring science exams. We're still waiting for ones from two years ago for scores. So, in due time, we will have science proficiency scores. ELA and math are both from the SAT, and English learner proficiency is access tests. All right, so that makes up 75% of our grade. This is like looking at a teacher's grade book. The other 25% of our grade falls under student success and school quality indicators. The, a great portion of this, which will go in today, is you'll see ninth grade on track. So, that is a very strong predictor of graduation. So, ultimately, graduation between where they're going from freshman year to where they end up senior year makes up the largest percentage of our accountability. So, what used to be about test scores, really the focus now shifts to keeping kids on track for graduation across the state of Illinois. That college and career readiness is that little piece we talked about at this time last year, which you'll see there. And then, in the rulemaking, somewhere over the next year, we'll end up with a percentage, and it may be local controlled, we don't know yet, between absenteeism and fine arts, can exchange some of those percentages for each other. So, that might be a topic that we bring back at a later date. All right, so that's the 75%, 25%. Inside of that, college and career ready, which makes up 6.25%. Indicating if a student is college or career ready could be this. So, they have a GPA greater than 2.8, which we talked about last year as a huge indicator of being prepared for post-high school work. There's an attendance figure. Attendance, as you saw with chronic absenteeism, is going to play in big, it also plays in here. And then looking at a pathway to what they do, what a student will do after high school, plays into this as well. That's one way to college, be college or career ready. If you don't meet that, there's another, remember, this is all about multiple pathways, all right? So, if you can't do it that way, then you could hit, it's like choose your own adventure here. So, all of the following, so there's, I'm not gonna go through all of these, or we'll be here all night, okay? But there's a list of language, English language requirements, they'd have to hit one of those on one side. You'll see a lot of the work we've done in the past plays into here, AP, dual credit, those. This is again where standardized test scores show up again. Math, it's the same type of indicators, okay? They need to identify a career area of interest, and then also meet three career-ready indicators. So, choose your own adventure goes deeper. So, here's the academic indicators. Remember, this is only for students that don't have a 2.8 GPA or higher. And then, they also would need to meet three of these. There's a lot of work that the board, this is the area that Illinois State Board says that the, the local school boards are going to have to make policy on. So, we will have to decide what a workplace learning experience is. We will have to decide what a program of study is. We will have to decide what counts for community service. So, there's going to be a lot of local control policy board work for us in the next year as well. So, that's going to be coming our way in future months.
So, in a way, like, when I was thinking about this, when I was looking at the first few, first few slides, you're kind of incentivizing schools to pass along students.
In some ways, yes.
Because you were looking at the graduation rate, but because you have these different tracks, you're kind, it, it, it works against it, it disincentivizes, you can't just pass along students.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Correct, there's, there's checks and balances in there in, in that process. But really, our goal is to get students to graduate from high school, and so it makes sense that that's our number one goal.
Hank, before you move on, can you just talk another minute about the college and career pathway endorsement under the Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness Act?
This one up here?
Yeah. Give a little more detail on that one?
I don't, because this is also a thing that's very much in the rulemaking process between the community colleges and the high schools. So, there is law that says students will receive a college and careerway pathway, or pathway endorsement, but there is no practice or anything established as to how to do that yet. So, but it's, it's law, and there are teams working on this. We've actually attended quite a few things with College of DuPage or other sessions talking about it, but I can't tell you what that is yet. So, as I said, this is going to be a lot of time spent with us and with you as the board as this become, the rules come out, as we understand this more, as things get defined as to how all of this works.
It's a work in progress.
Very much so, a work in progress. This is hot off the presses, you probably already know more about it than many educators in the state of Illinois.
That's frightening.
So, then, will you look, keep going up?
Yeah, keep going up.
Sorry.
This way, go down, we're the ones, go down.
No, we know.
Go on.
Keep going, keep going, so here, industry credential.
Yeah.
Is that like the programs we have now with College of DuPage? Or is that kind of like maybe coming back to doing some of the more fundamental, not really shop, but industrial credentialing?
TCD?
TCD.
A lot of TCD programs.
So, we, Gina and I have been talking a lot about what, just, at this point, it's brainstorming, and it might be later advocating if the local board doesn't get to control this, if the state will control this. But things like, does the journalism class that we just put on the books in the last year, where they go out and they have a peer-reviewed portfolio, and they receive that endorsement, is that an industry credential? If a student's in the A-plus, gets A-plus certified in computer repair, that, to me, is pretty clearly an industry credential. The athletic training class that we put on the books in the last year, where you could get that training endorsement, that's an industry credential, right? So, we already have a lot of these opportunities, this just leads credence to this, and, you know, provides that, for students, that truly choose your own adventure pathway to saying that you are ready for post-secondary success. But some of these, like completion of a program of study, we'll have to have the conversation, does four years of Project Lead the Way work? Does reaching the Capstone Course at TCD, would that count? You know, these are all conversations waiting for us in future months.
Interesting.
We will talk a lot more about curriculum at this table as a result of this, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah, I think so too.
All right, so here's our, our planned topics coming up. So, tonight, ninth grade on track and graduation rates. In the next few months, other topics that are on there, you saw GPA plays a huge factor in this, so we're gonna give you some historical ideas around GPA. Attendance data, another huge factor in this, and multiple indicators. SAT, another one, and multiple indicators shows up. AP and dual credit, now although it's a board goal and something that we continue to talk about as an accountability and a measurable goal, it gets lessened, but dual credit becomes more of a priority as a result of this. So, there's some, some shifting in that. Programs of study, co-curriculars are in there because involvement in two or more co-curriculars. So, we'll give you some reports in how involved our students actually are, and as other rules develop, stay tuned. And as we need to discuss things, we will.
So, you mentioned that we're involved in the rulemaking, trying to, trying to influence that process. How, how exactly are we doing that?
Some of it is just being, so, on the least involved that I would like for us to be is for people in departments or curricular areas or attendance experts, just staying on top of what's coming out of rulemaking committees, because then we have the opportunity for much of this to provide feedback as the rules are being made. Illinois State Board of Ed, through this whole process, has involved a lot of listening tours and feedback throughout this process, and they intend to do the same. So, as rule, or the same going forward. So, as rules are being made, they'll release, here's our preliminary idea of a rule around attendance. And then there'll be an opportunity for people to provide feedback. I want all of our experts to be aware of when the preliminary stuff comes out, and during that window of feedback, we will actively discuss it and provide feedback. So, that's the most limited way we could be involved. The, the highest involvement we can have is we have two English teachers actually on the very small committee that's writing those rules to then send out and then bring back.
That's marvelous.
So, and then, as these other, that's, right now, the only teams that have been made are English and math, but other teams will be formed over the, the upcoming months. As those are formed, we're putting our name in as, we're interested, we'd like a seat at the table. Now, I, I don't know if we'll be accepted or not, but we will actively look, as a district, to be leaders in the rulemaking process around ESSA.
Thank you for that.
And that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Very good thing.
All right. I know that was long, I tried to make it as short as possible. So, ninth grade on track?
So, two factors that we're gonna look at in terms of data tonight are the ninth grade on track and our graduation cohorts. So, as Hank said, rulemaking is still occurring. And it's interesting, because some of these factors, we've been reporting data on for years. Some of it isn't even as clear when you look at the law. So, what I'm gonna report tonight is what we believe they will be looking at based on the law. However, when the rules come out, it might look a little bit different. We know that, but we have some pretty good data that gives us a sense of where we're at. So, ninth grade on track, if you hear me refer to it as freshman on track, I apologize. For the last four years, it's been freshman on track, all reported through my office, and now they changed the name in ESSA to ninth grade on track. So, essentially, we report this data at the end of the school year. Ninth grade means first-year high school student. So, if a student, for example, we reclassify, so if a student should be a sophomore, because they're in their second year, but they don't earn enough credits, and we retain them as a freshman, this does not apply. So, these are first-year ninth graders. They have to meet a minimum of five credits that freshman year, that first year, and they cannot fail more than one semester in a core course. So, English reading, social studies, math, and science. And it does not include summer school. So, students who maybe fail a semester of biology, they may take biology in the summer and recoup that credit, but they are not considered on track. One of the things that Dr. Thiele already said, but I think is really important, is... the state has looked at data on this. And a student who is on track at the end of ninth grade is four times more likely to graduate with their cohort than if they're not on track. And they use this criteria. So just a taste of where we're at and where we've been the last four years, which this is really the good side of this new legislation, well, we report a lot of this already. So we have this data to look at. The threshold that they're establishing is 90%. So with the exception of one year, we are already meeting that threshold. Some of the things that we look at is which groups of students are not earning the credits, what courses students, you know, as a group are not earning credits in. We look at the students that came in because it doesn't necessarily mean that they came to us in August. If a student comes to us mid-year and it's their first year of high school, they're part of our freshman on track, our ninth grade, excuse me, on track. So, I know I'm going to do that a lot, I apologize. Four years and they change the name. But, so that factors in as well. So if a student comes to us mid-year and they're already down credits, that does impact our rate as well.
Oh, wait, I'm so sorry. So if they're a ninth grade on track, if they don't have all their credits, they don't get counted. But if they come mid-year, they could be counted without all the credits?
It would be at the end of the year. But if a transfer student does come to us, they count.
They count because they've already got, but they still have to fulfill all those same requirements?
Yes, they have to meet all the same requirements. So it's not just those students that come to us from our sender schools.
Okay.
You know, our six feeder schools.
On the downside, we could get hurt, you know, statistically by somebody transferring in who's not on track.
Positive or negative.
Right.
It does impact.
One student's going to make a difference, one or two.
But they need to meet those requirements at the school that they're in too.
It's across the board in the entire state.
I'm sorry.
I need clarification on something. You said if they go to summer school and they recoup a class, is, are they still not on track because that didn't happen before the end of ninth grade?
Yes, they do not meet the definition because summer school doesn't count.
And summer school is not counting because at the end of ninth grade, they were not on track?
Right.
So if they start sophomore year and they are now on track, assuming, because I'm just wondering how do you recover if you, but if they start sophomore year and all of a sudden they are, they've recouped that grade, they are now...
They're on track now for graduation.
But they, they are, they count against us, I guess you would say, because they weren't on track in June.
It's just defining where you take them to.
Right, it's a snapshot on this, your school year's over, let's say June 1st. June 1st, that's the cutoff. Summer school and recoup the credit that they lost. But that doesn't help us in terms of this rate.
Right, because it's already been counted against us.
Statistically, that student is less likely to graduate with their cohort. With their cohort.
I guess I, I didn't make this up obviously, but I guess I assume if they make an effort to go to summer school to recoup, that they're making an effort to probably be with, to graduate on time.
And of course, they're making an effort, they're moving on, they may be even earning enough credits to graduate in the four years. But this factor that the state pulls, this data, is hard and fast at the end of the school year. It doesn't count the summer, it doesn't count the next year. We don't do a 10th grade on track or a 11th grade on track.
But however, it's counted against us at the school.
But if they graduate, then we...
Then we get them back. There we go. At a higher rate, right? But as Gina said, all of the research, and this is very research-based, all of ESSA is very research-based. And if you look at it, students that fall behind freshman year rarely catch up, or it's an indicator that later on they will fall behind again. So it's, it's good data for us to have there. And it also encourages high schools to invest strongly in the intake of ninth graders. Right? If you think of it, if the data shows be on track ninth grade, you're going to graduate on time, because the law by nature is driving resources towards what the data and the research shows about high school students. It's saying invest in them early, right? And we're going to measure if you are or aren't.
And we would know when we transferred student, when students come in, from the majority, the majority of our students come in from our partner schools, we already have an idea about who's going to need more support in that freshman year because of that communication.
And most of our interventions are at the freshman level. So Read 180, which is our reading intervention, freshman level.
We've been doing it.
Our S classes for math, but we certainly have a lot of students in math 1S. That's an intervention. Our STRIVE, our after-school tutoring program focuses on freshmen. So we, we have a lot of interventions to meet the needs of the students right when they get here. We're not putting it down, you know, into sophomore. Graduation rates. Graduation rates, currently, we report five, four, five, and six year, but now this year they've added a seventh year. The ESSA language only accounts for four, five, and six. But we are actually going to be reporting year seven as well. The data that I pulled is from 2016 and before, and the reason for that is there actually will be fluctuations later. So a year later, even though we report certain data, new information about a student may be learned, and the state actually goes back and changes the data. That's good in the sense that when new information comes, they actually change the data. It's not hard and fast, kind of like I talked about that ninth grade on track is hard and fast. The graduation rate for five and six-year cohort is not. We actually pulled some data last week that I had pulled previously, and it was different. And we went back and accounted for another student that ended up graduating from another school. So it is good that it fluctuates. It is a little bit confusing to understand, and that's why I spelled it out very specifically here. When we look at graduation rates, we look at cohorts. And the new ESSA legislation in some areas addresses cohorts for graduation and in other areas just talks about graduation rates. I'm thinking they're going to continue with cohorts because that's what we've been doing for years. So what we're going to present tonight is going to be graduation cohorts. So in other words, the four-year cohort basically are students who came in as freshmen and in four years graduated. So these, for 2016 data would be students that first year here, freshman year, were 12, 13, was their first year, and then they graduated in 2016 or earlier. So like a three-year grad counts. Three and a half year counts. A five-year is a student who entered in 11, 12, and then graduated in 16, or even earlier. And then the six-year is the same idea, one year earlier, and then graduated in 16 or earlier. And it's not necessarily cumulative, which is where it really starts to confuse people. Because certain factors do not count for you and certain factors do not count against you. So as you look at these numbers, you might ask a few questions about, well, why is that different? Why did that go down? Why didn't that go up? And that's because certain factors do not influence it, but later can catch up. So I'll show you some rates that we've pulled. So I looked at...
Question?
Just a question. So for our students who go into the transition program, they have graduated by the time they go into transition, or might they be in transition and still not graduate?
We do not graduate them until they age out.
Okay.
We cannot keep graduates with us, so to speak.
So they're still non-graduates?
They're still non-graduates, but because they're being retained, it does not count against us. When they age out, we then count them as graduates. Which could factor into our six-year, but depending on their age and the year that they started school could factor into our seven-year. The new legislation only talks about four, five, and six-year. It's very clear.
I'm sorry, but so, so do they actually then count against us?
Yeah.
Yes.
If they don't graduate.
The six-year, if they do not graduate by that six-year, they do count against us.
Even though legally, they're entitled to education all the way through the day before their 22nd birthday.
So that I understand, when you say a fifth-year cohort, you're talking about someone that's a fifth-year student at the high school and a six-year student at the...
It could be a student too, it's yes.
It's that fifth-year student and anybody who graduated in advance of that fifth year.
So a four-and-a-half year, so on and so forth.
So you're getting credits, students that graduated after their graduation year.
So that includes summer school?
That would include summer school.
It includes summer school, yes, it includes.
After their senior.
After their senior year though.
Before and after.
Correct.
I know, it's a lot of, it's interesting too, because one of the reasons why you'll see some changes is, and we go through student by student, by the way. So we have an individual, one of my secretaries who does state reporting for the district, and she will pull lists and she will go student by student by student. And she will call the registrars and probably really upset people in the buildings because literally to find out where did this student go? When this student left, is this student going to another public high school? Does this student go into a private school? Do we have proof that this student, because what the legislation currently says is we have to have proof. So we can't just say, oh, this student's going on to another public school in Illinois. We have to have evidence of that. And so the data reporting is intense, but we have become very, very accurate.
Wow.
So we'll look a little bit at just some examples. So this is North High graduation rates for three years, looked at the fourth, fifth, and sixth-year cohorts. And you can see that our graduation rates are quite good. It's interesting when you look sometimes, when you compare cross-grades or you look at certain years, it can be a difference of a couple of students. So I looked at one year where we had three students that were retained, so they didn't graduate, they were retained. They don't hurt you on the fourth year because you retained them, so they're going presumably graduate. Two of them did not. That brought our rate down. So it is interesting that it can be a difference of one or two students that can change your rate.
So then what's the N for like the fifth and sixth? So for instance, the four-year cohort, it's going to be like 1,000 students. But what's the fifth, what's the fifth-year and sixth-year cohort?
Oh, it looks at all those students and then factors it in again.
So it's cumulative?
Yes, it's cumulative.
And then if somebody drops out?
That counts against us. Now, if a student goes on to our ALOP, which is like the DuPage, like GD program, and actually finishes, because we're sending the student there, that does not count against us. So in that sense, a student's getting a GD through an approved program that we're supporting, that does not count against us. There are certain factors that don't count against us. If they transfer to another public school, that doesn't count against us. But again, we have to have evidence of everything. So our rates are ranging, obviously, you know, they're, they're pretty solid. We have a couple of years, noticed our six-year cohort was down in 14, 15, and then it picked up, and we're hovering there around 96, 95%. But the other years are pretty, pretty solid. South High School, same years, graduation rates, four, five, and six-year. Again, a little bit lower on the four-year for 16, 17. We went through that and can identify which students brought that down. And we again, go through it one by one for every single student. I think in terms of data reporting, we've gotten better over the years of requiring that proof as well. So as we look at four-year cohort graduation rates, in the legislation, there are benchmarks. They talk about a three-year average and they give a 2016 benchmark and a 2019 benchmark. I'm using the 2016 benchmark, which part of the reason for that is we looked at the class of 2016, so it made sense to use that benchmark. And what I think is interesting about this, and I know there's a lot on this slide, there's a lot to look at, and actually my blue and purple seems almost to be the same color, doesn't on my screen.
They are the same color.
You've been there, done that.
Is it the same over here too?
I see different.
They're all the same color to me.
It doesn't look like that on my screen. But, but you can see we are by and large exceeding that benchmark with the four-year cohort.
Left from No Child Left Behind are the groups, all right? So we do disaggregate by any group with 20 or more students in that group. So there is that accountability measure that is carried on.
And that's why you do not see any bars for the Hawaiian Pacific Islander or the Native American. So you don't see a DGN bar or a DGS. We don't have 20.
Oh, we don't have 20.
We don't have 20. So that's why you, there's no marks for us. You just see the benchmark.
And the benchmark is pretty much the state average?
I don't know how they're determining the benchmarks because they're different for every group.
They don't tell us in the law how they got it. They just tell you that they will increase by a certain percentage every year going I do not care to guess.
But this was the 16 benchmark, so, and the 19 is substantially, 2019 substantially higher.
But, but to be fair, Terry, much of this law is research-based. So it would be fair to guess that that number is somehow based in some empirical research around graduation rates would be a fair guess. There's very, I'm not seeing stuff like we've seen in the past where you're just like, oh, somebody threw a dartboard and got that number.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, maybe it's more DuPage County, you know, would that be a better benchmark than the state?
For us, perhaps for our school district, we could report that out on what our, our normal comparables are and how we compare. For, for many of these aspects, I believe we'll have some other benchmarks that we believe are more indicative of our progress than what it, even the state requirements are as we develop this over time. But we just want to give you in comparison to what the state has right now.
These are the minimums.
These are the minimums, yeah.
This is what we have to do based on the state requirements.
Well, and you can see we exceed in, I mean, every area. If you look, for example, you know, at our LEP students, you know, we exceed by almost 20%. If you look at our, our black students, we're exceeding there by over 20% in both buildings. So we are substantially higher than what they've set the 2016 benchmark as.
And the idea that these benchmarks are based on a lot of research and they're going to be increasing, so the idea though, the starting point is kind of accepting where we are today and saying, okay, now we're going to...
Let's go up.
Let's go up from there. And so that's why you see the disparity between the different groups, because it's, there's research that says, here's where these, these are today. And then, so I like the idea that the benchmarks would be going up.
And that's why we want to give this to you in slivers and we'll come back, because you're, as you look at these pieces, you're going to want additional data reported out. You're going to want to probably as a board, set goals around some of these things to see improvement or reporting out in certain areas that will come to mind differently than they have in the past. Like ninth grade on track data, ninth grade on track for District 99 might be not failing any course that counts towards a graduation credit, not just in English and math, right? So we might have benchmarks that fall between, or fall above what the minimum states are.
So the benchmarks are different for four, five, and six-year graduation rates. This is obviously the five-year, and as you can see, again, the benchmarks substantially in some areas. And by school, and again, we have a couple of groups where we do not have enough of a population for it to count. And then our six-year graduation rate, again, for the most part, we are exceeding the benchmarks. We're falling close in some areas and need to work in some areas as well on the six-year. As you can see, for example, on the two or more races, the benchmark is higher than where we were at. So the six-year is an area where you see our scores fairly close to the benchmark, up in a few, down in one or two, but compared to the other two, that's the area that is more discrepant.
Well, and this is probably a very small group also.
It is a small, one or two students. Can make a huge difference.
Five students could be the whole group.
You know, I forgot which year it was. One of them for North Asian students, it was a difference of one student. But I honestly, I can't recall if it was the fifth year or sixth year. I mean, we went student by student.
Right.
But yes, one or two students can make a huge difference, especially when you're talking about the six-year.
Yeah.
What is that? LEP?
Limited English Proficiency.
Okay.
REL students, RELL students.
I guess I don't understand how two students... I guess I don't understand how two students can affect it if it's cumulative.
Yes, I, I wanna, I have a question on that, too.
So it's, when you retain students, they don't count against you. But once those students, if they do not graduate, they then count against you. So the kids that you've kind of pushed into the next year
Yeah.
will count against you. And typically, those students that haven't graduated in four years or by five years, oftentimes, they, they don't necessarily graduate in the fifth or sixth year.
What percentage as a whole is that? So what I don't understand is if you've got a thousand kids that graduate on time, and then you've got, or, so you've got a thousand kids and five kids went over for another year, and then two kids went over for another year, that should not have a huge, since it's a cumulative, since it's a cumulative number, that shouldn't really impact.
It's, it's not cumulative in the sense that, because you would expect, right, your fifth-year rate to be much higher than your fourth year. You would expect your fifth-year graduation.
No, I would expect my, I would expect my fourth-year graduation rate, I would expect my fifth-year graduation and, to be minimally, and then my sixth grade to be even more minimally high.
And some of it is, is even beyond our control. So a student may leave and go to another school. Or we might take a student in and the student's retained at the other school and transfers out and then drops out. It, it, it's a moving target.
I guess.
Sure.
If you have ten kids, and after their fourth year, well, let's say you have a class of eleven, and at the end of four years, nine of them graduate, one does not, but one stays. So your graduation rate is only nine out of ten, because the one is still with you. So your graduation rate is ninety percent.
Not if it's cumulative.
I'm on my fourth year.
Okay.
I haven't gone to the fifth year.
Sorry.
Now, the fifth year, that kid that stayed with you did not graduate. So your graduation rate now becomes nine out of eleven, reduces your percentage. So that's her point in how one kid can hurt you. If that kid stayed and graduated, your graduation is now ten out of eleven. But her point is, after the fourth year, those fifth and sixth-year students are less likely to graduate is why it would hurt your percentage.
And that's why one or two kids can skew your numbers.
No, I guess, I under, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, nope.
No, I under, I understand what you're saying, Ed, but you're starting off with a large number. We're not starting off with ten kids.
In some of these groups, we're not starting with large numbers, though.
Oh, okay, that's true.
Right, so.
That's true, because you're breaking them up, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You might be talking about twenty-one students.
I got it, sorry, thank you.
Our overall is really close.
I got it, I'm sorry.
But in some of these, and I didn't bring up all the documents I had, but like in one of them, I think there was twenty-two students.
We didn't put the N there for you, that would've helped.
I guess the point is, if I'm getting this correctly, we're English check as a district.
Here we are. Thank you, Cheryl. I know it took us an hour to get there, but yes, yes. And just, I know the rest of the team is now dreading Hank and Gina's show for the next, the next ten years of ESSA.
Can I just go to the North High School graduation rate slide?
Which year, the, the first year?
Four, five, and six comparison. So.
One more.
Yeah, one more. So I think what I'm confused, when Nancy was asking cumulative, I think the confusion is this slide because the four-year, five-year, and six-year are, are different starting points. So Nancy, it's not, the way I looked at this slide, I would have thought if it's cumulative, then you're actually comparing starting dates of twenty-twelve for all students. So then technically, then each, each graduation rate, if it's cumulative, should be a little bit higher. But that's not what, that's not what they're reporting. They're reporting, four-year cohorts are those who started in twenty-twelve and thirteen. Five is when, their starting is eleven and twelve. And six is when they're starting ten and eleven, so it's not really cumulative. Does that make sense?
There's three different graduating classes that you're looking at.
Total start date, so it's not, you're not, you're not really comparing the four, five, and six in this slide.
What we, what we'll have to do, and this is good to start getting this in front of you, right? To understand that is you're gonna have to look at some longitudinal four, five, six-year graduation rates, right? This is just looking at that, that one point in time.
Cumulatively, we'd have to look at the four-year this year, and then the next year, we, or.
Uh-huh.
Well, you follow, yes.
Isn't that the difference in the colors, aren't they, are they, do all the greens?
Which ones line up, Gina?
What do you?
So the green becomes the red, becomes the blue, correct?
It's the graduation date, not the start year date.
Right, that's not the start.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think I'm like, I think, I think I was having the same confusion you were.
That's exactly right, okay, I was reading it as.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it's clear as mud here, but yes.
It's the graduation.
So the green is not.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
But they all have to start at what, oh?
It depends on the year, so like the twenties, if you go one slide before. So the data that we looked at, when we looked at all the subgroups, is twenty-sixteen. So the four-year rate, where students had entered in twelve, thirteen. The five-year, where students had entered in eleven, twelve. And the six-year, where students who entered in ten, eleven.
Yeah, but shouldn't they all start in the same year? Shouldn't they all start in twelve?
So, so our seventeen data will be the students that started in, for four-year, in thirteen, fourteen, and continue. And then eighteen, twenty-eighteen, those students will have started in, the six-year will be twelve, thirteen.
But we're in good shape. But we're in good shape.
But we need to follow them more in a better, in a cohort, I get it, I get it.
Is there any?
It's a cohort model, so following the kids.
Yes.
It makes sense, if you, if you think about it that way. Because we're following the students, and how many of them are graduating in four years? How many are graduating in five years? How many are graduating in six years? If a student transfers from us and goes to another public high school, it's counting for, for them. And students come to us, it's counting for us. So it's, it's following that cohort of kids versus saying every year we graduate ninety percent of our students. So the cohort model makes sense when you think about looking at it as a group.
As I said, this is the reason why we're not doing all of ESSA in one night.
Yeah.
And we will go back to it over and over again, because this is, there is a lot of complex data that's going to fall in here, and little things could play out, and it can come down to a single student. Because if you're not meeting in a group, you are not meeting. So when you get down into some of the smaller groups, it, some of that same feel from NCLB is still around. We need to pay attention to all of our students. We can't just get lost in the, the big overarching data and cover for, for different student groups. We, we really need to pay attention to all kids, especially those at risk.
I think we've been doing that.
We have, but the law, that, some people thought when NCLB retired, that ESSA would return, or, ESSA would come in and not, not account for that any longer. That has remained from NCLB. So some schools thought that they would go, be able to go back and hide in the large numbers. It has maintained in ESSA, there's no hiding, right? You need to take care of all your kids, which we do, and we're very proud of that. But it does make it, when some of the data analytics, a couple of kids can swing numbers very quickly.
So, you know, in the end, though, it's, what do we do, what do we do with this data? How does it help us increase our student, you know, our, our student success here in District ninety-nine?
And ISBE says, as long as that's what we're focused on, we will be fine.
Well, so, so in the, in the data that you're collecting so far, I mean, are you discovering things that you weren't already aware of? Are, is there something here that, that is gonna cause us to do things differently?
We've put a lot of interventions in place to enable students to graduate. So for example, we have like a credit recovery program where students work after school to make up credit. We have other interventions in place in terms of like some of our resource centers and some of the ways that we use our facilities.
So, but was this, was this triggered by the data that we're collecting now because of ESSA or something? We are already focused on it. That's, this is what I'm saying.
Already doing.
So this all sounds really great and everything, but it's kind of, I'm kind of where Cheryl is. It's like, we're doing good. You know, I mean, this, this data, to me, isn't that useful to us.
You know what it does do, though, Mike? It, instead of before, where you had a one-day test, depending on how kids did on that one day, was your full accountability measure, we are finally being rewarded for all of that work we are doing to make sure the kids succeed. And that is very empowering to us as educators. Where, you know, the, all of the stuff that Gina's talking about before, we received no recognition from the state of all the work we were doing to make sure that all kids were successful and graduated on time or graduated and moved on to post-secondary success. The things that we do to get kids placed at college, the things we do to get kids to take dual credit, the co-curriculars that we encourage kids, that full, rich college experience that you and a board, as a board, has supported for so long, NCLB accounted and rewarded none of that. ESSA now does, right? So the things that we have been doing as a school district are finally recognized through ESSA.
So the public will know how awesome we are.
I hope so.
As opposed to being concerned that we're somehow missing a target because a hundred percent of our students didn't meet or exceed.
Correct, or had a bad day on one day of testing.
Right.
Yes.
I heard you also mention that the, part of the goal in this is to connect schools with other schools. So are we going to be spending time supporting other schools?
We may, or we may have a gap where we need to reach out to other schools and close that one. And we, we do that already. We do that, I mean, that's part of being, part of the profession and giving back to all students.
I understand, I'm just wondering if we're gonna be having, being told we have to do more.
I, I think it's gonna be more like, here, you have, you have this deficiency or this area where you can improve, here's the list of other schools that are successful. Now it's up to you as professionals to get better. So it's not, like I said, the old hammer is kind of fading away with NCLB. And it's more of, you guys are professionals, find your gaps and grow, which we do. But now, like I said, I, many of us are very encouraged by the fact that this, this actually pays a lot of tribute to the work that we're doing for kids.
And Michael, you say other schools, are you referring to other high schools or just other schools in our district?
Or high schools. No, if there's, let's say there's an area where we're really crushing it, which we are in a lot of areas. Will be listed as a school district to reach out to and find out how to improve. How are you doing it? And, and we'll share. But right now, if a school called us and said that, we do that already, yeah.
I would just add that, the reason we're doing okay, a lot of that reason is here, sitting across from us, Mr. Carty and all of our teachers and all of our deans and all of our, everybody. So everybody really does deserve a good pat on the back for the fact that we're doing A-OK.
There, there is some excitement growing amongst this. I have already heard from several department chairs and a couple of teachers around finally, people will start recognizing the work that we do rather than just harping on a single test score.
That's good.
Well, our focus here has always been on following these cohorts all the way through, too, and that, you know, and looking at, how, how do our students, where are they at when they come in? And how are they progressing through? And comparing them with themselves instead of, instead of arbitrarily comparing them to, you know, last year's ninth grade students. So, so we, this is just part of our DNA here. It's good stuff. It's good to know we're doing so well. We are.
Thank you for breaking it up.
Yes. And even with that, that was very long, alright.
Did you have something, Cheryl?
No, I was saying, I, ditto, thank you for breaking it out.
Okay, I guess we're moving on to master facility.
I told you it'd be an eight-hour workshop, I think it'd be an eight-day workshop, now that I saw how long it took for that one. Alright.
Were you talking about the master facility plan?
Yep, Jill and I wanted to update you on the work that we've been doing around the master facility plan. We've prepared, we shared with the board, and it's available in Board Docs, some of the community letters that went out that are informing our community of what is up and coming, what we're working on with the master facility plan, but focusing in on the major areas of the project, which is really, as we do these community, these community presentations, we're building it around these themes so that the community is well aware of what they're, what we're going to be presenting on. That it's, that if we move forward with this, there's some kind of a financial impact to it, yet to be determined. And when we have our community meetings, and they can come in and receive the full presentation with all the details on this, including tours at the end.
So this letter is going out to forty-five thousand in our communities. We did not go with registered voters, we went with everybody. So everybody will receive this letter, they'll receive the newsletter that I also printed out on your desk there. And then there will be a mail survey, forty-five thousand, so everybody will receive everything, multiple chances.
So Hank, my only, my only concern or question I would have is, so I think you guys are doing a great job with organizing community meetings and educating the public to this. But like, when I read the letter, my only concern is, when we've talked before, we've talked that there's a couple of different options on the table. There's an, an option where we can replace the bond issue. There's an option where we go all-in and we go for a, a much larger that would increase taxes. But like, when I look at this letter, it only really, when I read this, it reads like we're only informing the public about the all-in that would increase taxes, we're not telling them that there's a choice.
Yeah, so we've been very careful to present around what the maximum impact would be, and then in those meetings, we'll address from there. The, the challenge in this is, how much can you present in numbers before it gets confusing? So we didn't want it ever to appear like we were trying to deceive or confuse the public. So we figured the largest numbers, the largest impact would be where we would work from and then work back from there in our, in all of our presentations to the public. So yeah, that, it was a, this was a huge point of conversation with both our team and the consultants that we have in, is how to frame this so that it is most understandable to a reader.
Isn't it fair to say that this board, too, has looked at this over quite a period of time now?
Yes.
Yes.
And we've discussed what to include, what not to include. And the preference has been, we'd like to get it all done if we can. I mean, that's been, that's been the discussion, at least with the previous board. So I think it's fair to present that to, to the, to the public.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, just to provide feedback on that, we will present that, but we will present the other options. We will also test on the other options as well. So it's just this portion of the letter of how much do you get out and how do you get people in to hear all of that?
I, I actually think presenting it this way will drive people to come out based on presenting the most impact that could have to them, right? Because they'll come out and wanna know, and what's the alternative to this, because I, I don't support this, or whatever the case may be.
Absolutely.
So throwing it all at them, will get those who will have the most to say about this, and they'll come out to see what the other options are.
Well, that's just, we wanted to know if the community would support, would support.
I guess, I was confused, too, when I read this. I thought, it didn't, to me, when I read that statement, it didn't reflect our discussions on the previous board when we discussed this, I guess. That was my only concern.
What specifically?
The, the tax increase. I thought, I guess I thought there was gonna be options kinda too, I guess.
Meaning the lesser of the.
Yeah, I read it and I thought, whoa.
There will be, and that, and the closing sentences there, where your recommendations will help the district craft a proposal that addresses the needs of both our students and taxpayers.
Because we haven't made a decision.
No. No, we haven't. And that's, that's what these.
That's what I mean.
So I'm comfortable, as long as we're making it clear in the meetings that there are options. Because this letter doesn't read to me like there's options. The letter read to me like, we're proposing this project, which is gonna increase your taxes on average by sixty-five, and, and we're not proposing that yet.
We're not, and it's very clear in the presentation of, there's, there's really, the board has discussed three options, right? It's doing nothing and allowing the bonds to come off, which has not been popular, but it is an option. The reissuing the bonds at the. The reissuing the bonds at the same rate is kind of Plan B, and then Plan A, which is the full scope of the proposal. And that is, I, in every meeting, in everywhere, we give the absolute numbers, we give the details of what would come and what would go. We, we are very clear. We were just advised, if this is the one thing that somebody reads, not to have them get confused with a lower number, and then later the board comes back with a larger number, and their belief was that, oh, well, you were going to do this lower number, and now where did this higher number come from, right? That you kind of, not that I think it's the worst-case scenario, but money-wise, it's the highest number, the, the recommendation was always lead with the biggest numbers, you can always go back from there, and people are comfortable with that. If you give the impression that it's a smaller number, and later on they learn of a larger number, that trying to correct for that leads to a lot of distrust in your community. So as you can imagine, these were, every line of this, we scrutinized and went through, this one, many iterations of it, and this is, in the end, what we felt would, would reflect those things.
So the other actions will be presented?
Absolutely, yeah, including how much the average household's taxes would go down if we did nothing. We are, in, our goal along all of this has been to inform as clearly as possible of all of the, the options. It was just the...
FAQ will have that as well.
And the FAQ has that as well, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it would be the other way around it, because people are going to come and they're going to ask for...
I hope they do come.
I hope they come, too.
I hope they do come. I really do. The more, the better on this one.
Absolutely.
I think so.
Yeah, we'd love standing room only. So, and that was, yeah, it was tricky as to what to put in here. So I can understand those perspectives. We had the same conversations around the table as to how to do that.
Because, I mean, you also have the reverse that could happen, is people could get this letter, since it is going out to such a big group, and I know a lot of people, the first thing that's going to stick in their mind is, you're asking for a tax increase. And if we don't vote for that, and that's not the proposal we put forward, the only thing they may remember is, you're asking for a tax increase, even though we may not be asking for a tax increase.
Right.
When it votes on. So I get why you did it, makes complete sense. I just wanted to make sure that the options are laid out, which they seem like they are. So I'm fine.
And we will have a whole nother job informing the community as to whatever decision the board makes in the future. There's the follow-up to what actions the board takes in the future that go along with this.
Thanks for your explanation.
Yeah, no, no, it's, yeah, I get it. We went through all of this as well, so I could totally understand why you'd have those questions.
Because in December, we have to decide.
Yes.
Whether we're doing...
A, B, or C.
Well, my plan is to bring you something in December, and then you can tell me if you want to decide then or not. So, I did want to point out, is it this artist rendering one? I'm trying to remember which one is called which. It's the FAQ document that I'm looking for. No, it's not that one.
Last one.
Is it the last from Planning Update? Yeah, this is coming, because it's the big one. This is the document that's built around the FAQs. And I, I think this is the most comprehensive document to date. Yeah, this one's loading up. It has artist's renderings, it has the key FAQs that have come out through our key influencer meetings, or our citizens' task force, our superintendent's advisory. And this one as well is going out to every household in the community, okay? So this Q and A document, you can see, it's lots of, lots of graphics, it took a while to lead, to load.
And that's great, and the more information we get out to everybody, the better.
Exactly. So our key through this has been to inform all households, not just those that have students enrolled in District 99. All of our committees have involved a full breadth of the community. So we've been very careful to make sure that everybody is involved, or can be involved if they would like to be. So this is a good one, I think, for you to take a look at and go through. This one will go out a little bit later, right? The first one goes out as the letter, and then a little bit later, this one will follow.
That's why now all the meetings are listed on...
Yeah, on the bottom, yeah. And this is the one that, following this will be the survey. And the survey will go to all households as well. So the board will hopefully have a lot of data, which is what the board has been asking for, for, before I got here.
Yep.
Is to eventually get information back, backed by data as to how the community feels around this, and that's what we're working towards, to get you in the next few months. So any other questions on that one?
I think it looks great. I think, I'm really, really happy with that, and I'm really happy with the decision to send it out to all residents of the district.
Yeah.
Nice work.
Thank you.
What, what, Jill?
It's a team of people.
It's a big team, yeah.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Is there anything else on the master facility plan? Hearing none, we'll move on to our reception of visitors for the evening. Does anybody want to address the board? Hearing none, we are going to go to adjournment. Two things, we will have our next meeting on October 16th here at the ASC, and following adjournment, we will have a small reception for our student members of the board.